I'd like to call to order the Aridale County Board of Commissioners four o'clock pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, October the 21st, 2025. And I'd like to ask the county manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, our Chair Conley, we have one adjustment, and that's the removal of economic development from closed session. So we will not have a closed session this evening.
Thank you. We do not have any special recognitions and awards, and we do not have any appointments before the board at our six o'clock. We do have a public hearing to consider requests from a possible economic development incentive, which will be held at the six o'clock. Now it brings us down to our administrative matters, and I'll let turn it over to the county manager to kick those off.
Hey, thank you. The first item is a presentation from administration on the Aridale County Fairgrounds, Regional Farmers Market, and Parking Area Design and Budget. And Mr. David Salibi is here to make this presentation to the board.
You've got a lot of papers.
That's the first pile. Give me time, I'll get it all to you.
I like the picture, though.
I would, but I didn't choose that one.
It looks like Mouse.
I hope you all have had a chance to look over this item. I will say, before I get started, this is a tag team. I've got Chelsea Hansen with me from CPL, and CPL was brought on as your designers, who represents Benish Engineering for this project. So all of the great and wonderful stuff that you see is a result of CPL's team. I gave you too much. There we go. But I'll just start off with saying, per the agenda packet memo, is per the board's request, the Aridale County Fairgrounds project moved forward with the schematic design and pricing for the regional farmers market and expanded parking area. Aridale County staff, the CPL team with designers, along with Benish Engineering, developed the schematic plan. A lot of input from staff early on for the schematic plan and preliminary pricing. Now, when I say pricing, I always emphasize estimates. The best we can do, I think you all know me well enough, nothing's in concrete till bid day. Bid tells it all, but we try to get good market estimates. So what's coming before United is a result of the pricing and ideas from F L Bloom Construction, who was brought in and approved back at the first of the year, and they are in Winston-Salem, and they've done a great job. They are our CMR, Construction Manager at RIS for this project. So, like I say, this is a tag-team match. Not tag-team match, this is a tag-team effort, yeah, match. And so I'm gonna let Chelsea go through the first several slides that you will see as far as parking and kind of explain, and please feel free to interrupt and ask questions as we move through. And then, when we get to the pricing piece, I will attempt to explain it the best I can, and with Manager Milton chiming in where she can or where it's needed. And we've got our Finance Director Caroline Taylor right here behind us, and she can really help us out if you have questions on that part, okay? So I'll turn it over to Chelsea, right now, back and forth, and Mouse.
All right.
Okay.
Hey, everyone. I've met some of you before. Nice to see you. So this is an outline for what we have for you guys. We're starting with some site plan for parking area and the farmers market area, and then we have two main options that we're looking at for the architectural design. So one is an open market, and the other is an enclosed market, to let you look at those differences. And then, as David said, we get into some pricing and some alternatives that we put up for suggestion for you all. So the first drawing here is of that parking area. This is located off of that existing entrance off of Murdoch Road. It's where that gravel lot is currently located. We just looked at maximizing the site to include as much parking as possible, up to 775 spaces. And then, our team also kind of broke that into these sections, area A, B, and C, to give you a sense of how much you could get if you wanted to break this down into less scope. And now, we're moving on to the site plan for the farmers market area. So this is located right off of that main existing entrance into the fairgrounds site. We sited the building to kind of nestle it between the existing buildings and the midway, to be as least disruptive to the operations as possible, and as least disruptive to the midway. There's some parking adjacent to the building as well, accessible parking, and some parking for the vendor, so they can drive up to the building and access the stalls. This is kind of a general grading plan, and really, this is just telling you, we were looking at the grading, making sure that the slopes were manageable for maintenance, but we also wanted to make sure the pathway to the midway was at a slope that was accessible. Now, moving on to the open market floor plan. So the market includes 30 stalls for the farmers market. It also includes restrooms that serve the building and the surrounding area, conference room, and a couple of offices. And then, this was really looking at creating a concessions that could maybe replace the one that's existing on-site and make it as functional as possible. It was located at the end of the building to allow for a lot of queuing around the building, to make patrons coming to receive services more efficient. And these are just some elevations. So the materials we were looking at were hardy plank and brick. These are the materials we took from a building that you all did recently, from Jennings Park, I believe. So we wanted to set the tone for what materials would be on-site for any future projects, and keep it in line with the materials you all are used to maintaining. The open market features this roof pop-up that helps to draw some interest into the main farmers market area. We kind of wanted the design to emulate a little bit of some agricultural-style buildings. The pop-up allows for more light to get into the space and some ventilation. And this view is of the concession side. So we also included a canopy that wraps around the whole building to help keep water from coming into the building and help shield patrons as they're getting their food, et cetera. There's four windows that surround that corner to help with queuing, like I mentioned earlier. Now, this is the closed market, and it's very much the same that we just looked at. The major differences are that the farmers market area is enclosed. You can access the stalls through overhead doors, and by enclosing the building, we're able to feature more of a main entrance, which you can see kind of towards the planned west side. There's a canopy and doors on that side.
How wide are the doors?
So in the elevations here, you can see the differences are, the garage doors are added to those longer elevations. We have a design for the main entrance that I talked about with the canopy. We made it a bit more classy, but essentially, the shape of the building is more or less the same. It's just now enclosed. And this rendering helps to describe that main entrance for the farmers market area with a big welcoming canopy. The roof pop-up allows for more light to get into the building, and also allows more opportunities for ventilation. And then, the concession side is very much the same as what we just looked at. Same materials, canopy wraps around. One thing that we wanted to look at as an option for you all is, what if the market was enclosed, but we eliminated the roof pop-up if we decided that was kind of outside of the scope? What would that main entrance maybe look like? So taking some of those similar design features of the deep canopy and the glassy entrance, but just on a little bit smaller scale.
Thank you, Chelsea. I'll back up just a little bit to make sure that we understand exactly where everything's positioned. This is our main entrance that we've got now coming off 21. You can see that the midway is going to be adjusted just a little bit to accommodate the slope for mowing. We've already checked with Parks and Rec on mowing, making sure that we have the right slope for them. And right now, between the chicken, I'll just use our words, between the chicken house and the current concession stand, we go straight to the midway. Since we're grading and moving things around, that will be here, and it will move people this direction onto the midway, instead of just straight down. We just had to have that room. If you notice right here, this little dotted-in area, that is your future master plan ideas that you have, and we want to make sure that we're able to fit it in there and not impact future phases in your master plan. Over here is the existing barns and the arena that we have. So we're kind of using the same driveway entrance in the best we can.
But if I remember correctly, right now, it's a single drive entrance, and we were going to expand it so we could have two lanes, correct?
We are expanding it to 26 feet, and plenty of parking here, and still have our bank. I will say, she was talking about the grading plan here. If, here and over at the parking area, which we'll look at again, the site is balanced. That means a lot to us, who are trying to stay within budget. Balanced site means we don't have to haul dirt in or out. We can, if we have extra, we've got place on-site to use. If we need more, we've got some room between the midway and 21. All depends on the soils, the suitable soils, and what we can use. As we've always tried to do, and we will continue, is our project follows the budget, not vice versa. So we'll move on up to the closed market. Let's see, farther. Okay. On the parking area, first, we had one big parking area that wasn't sure how our project would follow the budget, so we broke it out. And you can kind of see clearly, over here, this is, this is an existing kind of a pond, but because of the size of this, we have to have retention pond, probably going to be a wet pond, which is fine, it'll be fenced in. This is 21. This really is the Anzrood property line here. So we've tried to use all that we can to get all the spaces, and 775 is pretty good. But this is how it's broken down, and I'll go into these numbers in just a minute. Hopefully, it's a little bit more clear. It will have all site lighting. We'll do just like we've done at Mooresville, Elections, and at Jennings Park. All of our lighting will be leased lighting from the, at least here, is Duke Energy. And it'll be set up without the overwash onto adjacent properties, and we'll have plenty of lighting there, maintained by the provider. Any questions on parking? Lot of ADA. I think we've got 16 ADA places. It's right down in here, I think, close to the entrances, okay? Next slide really gives you the option. We want to give you everything, well, this is not the option, but gives you the cost. So we've got the open market, $4,353,404. With, without the pop-up, excuse me, the pop-up was $61,000. Without the pop-up, it's $4,292,404. The closed market that you were looking at is $5,225,898. And the pop-up on that one, because it's got windows in it, $87,345. Chelsea mentioned the light, and also the view, but on this one, and on this one, this one here, we can put ventilation in the end, or ventilators in the end. With the fan system that we have, we can use updraft and ventilate that place pretty well through the pop-up. So without, closed market without the pop-up is $5,138,553. We pulled the concessions allowance out, and that is, we did it, still trying to stay within our budget, stay within the, what we were given with the grant. So just to give you an idea of what concessions equipment cost, and this is, this is not, if you've been to the fair and you ever worked in a concession stand, now, this is not what you have, but this is gas and warmers, gas stoves, to meet Health Department requirements, and it can be used for all kinds of things. Chelsea said there was four large, open windows that people can walk up to, so we can get a lot of people in and out of there in a hurry. Not just for fair. Remember, this is a fair, it's only nine days of the year. We've got a whole year that Parks and Rec can lease this thing out and use it for different things. And I've already shown you, but this is kind of how the parkant lays out. Base price, area A, that's the, this one, is $3,841,438 is our estimate. A and B together, which would be $520,000 more to add the blue, at $4,361,438. And if you want to do the whole thing, you would, again, area C, which is the yellow, picks up another 221 spaces, $627,500, $627,500 more. Total for the parking is $4,988,938 is the estimate at this time. Remember, estimate in schematic design. We will have estimates at, from schematic, we go to design drawings, we'll have another estimate there. And then, from design drawings, Bert, if you remember on the jail, from design drawings to the construction drawings, we'll have another estimate. Through that whole process, we can add and take away to fit the budget, grant or budget that we've been given. Now, the next slide kind of gives you a minimum build-out. That's the least, that's doing parking lot, A only, concessions equipment, and then the open market with no roof pop-up. It brings us in at 9813144. Our grant at this time is $10,100,000, but I understand that we're gaining about $30,000 a month. So by the time we let the contract out, we hope, in March, April timeframe, you're going to have another maybe $150,000, $200,000 of that. And it all has to be spent, correct? Interest and all?
Yes, all of the grants, so the integrated, plus interest has to be.
And there's two grants, two deadlines, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if we did the minimum that we could do, which I just described, you'll have 286856 remaining for the sprucing up of the barns, or whatever we were going to try to do, okay? Any questions on that part? And that's what this would look like with...
I've got a couple of things. In your parking lot design, do you have plenty of room around the building where people with truck and trailer can maneuver and back up to the doors and unload, or whatever?
The best we can. Let me back up to, just a minute.
I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't tell.
They gave extra Y. Let me see if I got a dimension there, Gene?
I couldn't see it.
26 feet here, and another 18 feet of parking. The best we can with trailer. Large trucks, we are planning on. Trailers may be a little tricky unless they come early.
Right.
It's all the space we have, so we...
Hopefully, have a move-in, a pack-in, or whatever, vendor day.
Correct.
But also, you and I were talking earlier with a couple of others. I'd like to see us, I personally like the pop-up method enclosed. I think personally, an investment with the grant and the money we've set aside for years, you know, I think, I think you do it right. I think we do the enclosed situation. I like the pop-up. If you did the pop-up, and we were, and we added air conditioning, you and I talked about a main trunk line down the middle. Can you still leave the exhaust option to where if you were there, and the bay doors were up, and you wanted to pull air through there, you could still do the exhaust situation?
You can. And I checked right before the meeting, that the maximum build-out includes $67,000 extra in that price that I'm looking at here of $11,894,102, which includes air conditioning. Air conditioning was $67,000.
So it wasn't much?
Not in the, not in the big picture, to air condition it and keep the space dry all year.
Well, that gives you the ability, I think Brad mentioned, we were just briefly, and Bert talking before the meeting, is the voter, you know, use it for elections. It gives us a whole lot more year-round options for all of our departments. Beth and I were talking about the meeting space. You know, it gives us year-round options as an investment for our citizens to use and rent. And also, you and I were talking about, potentially add some alternates for the board to look at when you get hard numbers, like outside plugs around the building. And I'd like to really see if there was a way, I like all three phases at one time. Do it one time, do it right, and there's no construction disrupting anything in the future. That's me. But I'd like to see if there's a way to put power, potentially on the outskirts of those parking lots and stuff, to where if you had some overnight guests, or you had food vendors, you had car shows, you had people using the space for various reasons, you could have, you know, food vendors and others with electrical power, at least electrical power, maybe look at that. That's just me asking for some alternate options on power around the parking lot, and especially around the building.
We'll plug both of those in. The one around the building will be minimal.
Right.
We can put maybe five, or even eight, down each side?
Well, I didn't know if like the vendor, you know, when they did the outside lighting, I didn't know if they had a way to do some power options on their poles with a separate meter, to where we pay an extra power bill when using those plugs, not the lighting. We're paying monthly for the lighting. I'm just, I just wonder, I'm not electrician, so I'm asking the question, is do they have that ability potentially?
They...
The wire, it's a, I am an electrician, and it's a lot bigger wire.
It's a lot bigger, okay.
LED lights now, take minimal.
Minimal. So to run power out there, it would be us running...
Minimum 30 amps.
Yeah.
I'll give you an example. When we first put the Greenway in the town of Troutman, all we did was put poles in, and then Duke came back through, and we were able to add on a separate meter, and add at every pole, lighting for the Christmas.
Right.
So it's metered. You don't have to really turn it off. Well, I guess you would if you, but, but it's metered, and you would have just a bill just for those receptacles around those poles.
Right.
Or somewhere, yes, it can happen.
I just think, you know, you're a builder. I mean, if you're going to do it, do it while you do it in the beginning, instead of go back and do it later.
You see that bill, you're going to go crazy.
If you wanted to be using that all the time, you would be...
Well, I'm talking about the bill to put it underground.
Oh, to put it underground, I got you.
You can't run over 500 feet from the meter, so...
Right. I got you.
We can bring it back as an alternate for that part. How's that?
Yeah, at least some options in the part that's close enough to the building, or where you run it from. Maybe not down into the yellow, but maybe at least the pink and blue. I don't know, just get some options on pricing.
I mean, most, you know, most of like food trucks and those type of things have their own generators.
Yeah.
But those two items, we can definitely add in. We can plug it into the estimator, and just see what we can do with it.
Yeah, I hear some of these guys' ideas. I just was brainstorming with them beforehand, and I know there's always a need for election locations, especially in Troutman and Mooresville, but I know originally, some people second-guessed us when we did Jennings Park at one, at one time, but at the end of the day, they're all glad we did, and we're having to add additional parking because people are using it. So I think an investment like that, you might as well do it right when you do it.
Well, our estimate is, without the two, without the two alternates, full build-out, all parking, closed market, understand that it's...
With AC?
And air conditioning, yeah.
Eleven something.
We're right at 11894102, which puts you a little bit over your grant. Actually, 1794102 over the grant, but if we pick up a little bit more interest, it could be as low as 16 or 15.
What did we, Scotty, I know Scotty in one budget made a motion we approved, we set aside, what, $6 million for fairgrounds?
Well, so currently, Anne Caroline talked about, we talked about this yesterday. So currently, we have $10,170,000. And as she said, we were going to accumulate about...
Thirty-five.
Thirty thousand a month in interest, and all of that has to be expended as part of the grant.
Right.
We also have $6 million that is set aside in the Fairgrounds Capital Project Fund that we have not touched. So that is dollars that we have set aside for that. So if you wanted to do that, then between the grant and what we've accumulated with interest and what you've set aside in that capital project fund...
We're well within budget.
You have enough to do the full thing if you choose to do that.
What other ideas did y'all have?
David, all the parking is paved, correct?
Correct.
All three, okay.
It'll look real similar to what you see at Jennings.
Most definitely the pop-up, in my opinion, because we've got to do something for the early voting, and we've got to do something for voting, which that means, once this thing gets built, if everybody agrees tonight, and everything happens, and this thing pops up, that thing's going to have to be shut down for early voting and voting.
Yes, we'll just add that to the schedule.
Yeah.
We will, we'll go ahead and add that to the schedule, then it'll be used for that.
It needs to be in concrete, because we have a hard enough time, and the Board of Elections has a hard enough time. Suzie, Karen, both, trying to negotiate, trying to find places to vote. So this right here would give them a good place to have it. You've got that conference room, you've got a secure place there, you can lock up stuff and places for people to be, so...
What's important county operation?
The pop-up keeps it looking in the agricultural world.
Right.
Yeah. Now, I will say that these, let me back up a little bit here. Excuse me. This, the, the colors that we're showing, we've been through a lot of them. This is just first shot at what Jennings has. What'll happen, once we start, we will choose a brick, and there's a couple of different bricks, but once it's done, then what we build on-site on all these kind of projects is, we build a mock-up. And we can give a splotch of this color and this color, and we can show you different colors before we actually go with the hardy board, or painting the hardy board. We were trying to match, we were trying to match existing colors. So we've got a red farmer, a red concession stand, a forest-green concession stand, a white concession stand you may or may not know about that's in the chicken house, and then we've got white and dirty white all around the barns. So there's all kinds of colors, but this seems to fit the agricultural look. It seems to follow the theme, but one thing to remember, that we, whatever we start with here, if the board chooses, we're going to continue as you, in the future, as you go to different phases. We'd like for it to look the same, but the board can definitely make them all look different if they want to.
Needs to be durable and something that hides streaks.
This is durable, this is concrete hardy board, hardy plank. With, we're trying to make it maintenance-free the best we can.
Right.
David, is this, this amount, does it include contingency and everything that we need, or...
We cannot use grant for contingency, correct?
Right.
So...
We've got the six, Neil and Beth mentioned, total as a contingency for project.
But if we're, but if we're looking at the 11, right at the 12, we're going to have to add more to it for contingency?
Yes. If we come back, when we come back with the GMP, here in TAD, Maximum Price, there'll, there'll be a budget packet that will show you, here's your project, and here's your contingency. And we work very hard to protect our contingencies.
Can I ask you a question? Both of you. And I know you come back with what we asked you to come back with. Is there anything you've seen at other places you've been to, or other things you've built, that we might want to consider as an alternate? consider as an alternate that we haven't considered yet? As far as function, usability, is there anything you guys have talked about that we need to hear that you've seen or potentially that would make it, because we, we would have a wide array of uses probably.
I would say that in terms of the restroom counts and everything, we've designed this as if it is an assembly space.
Right.
So it's a space for exhibits potentially for people to gather. Um, from the farmer's market perspective, I would say that what you, the comments you've made about including the outlets on the exterior, that would kind of see, be the main addition I would see. Um, I think especially with the pop-up, it really accomplishes what we see trending at these facilities.
Okay.
Uh, and Jean, I will add that, uh, what you're, what you see here was not created in a vacuum.
Sure.
So we've, we've been to Asheville, we've been to Greensboro, we've been to Ansonville, Anson County. We've looked at other markets and this is real similar, but I would say uh, Asheville's supposed to be, was the nicest one, what, thirty years ago or whenever it was?
Right.
Uh, this is gonna be really, really nice because Asheville actually turned into a flea market instead of a farmer's market.
Right.
And this will be a regional farmer's market.
Okay.
That can be broken down when they leave and then other spaces.
And, and that's one thing that we, um, that we communicated. This is not where somebody rents booth space and leaves their items there for an extended period of time. They come during the day that it's scheduled, they bring their produce, they set up.
They get with them.
And then they take it with them whenever it's, it's done and they take whatever's not sold with them. So this is not something that is a year-round rent your booth space and leave your materials there. Um, and the reason that it's that way is because this is, our intent is to have a multipurpose facility that can be used for other things like early voting and like other things like that. So it will just, it won't be a permanent booth space, space for people to rent and keep their materials there.
Mention again, inside you got conference rooms, you got a couple offices.
I've got that.
Bathroom, assembly, according to assembly. Kind of just touch on that for people that may be listening or.
Uh, the, uh, you have the assembly area, but what you have is two offices that could be used for fair offices and they are secure and lockable.
Or, or anyone that is renting that space that needs to have, like, for example, if someone is doing something and they have to collect funds and they need to go, they go, need to go count money, but they don't want to do it out in this open space, there's an office where they could have some privacy to be able to, and, and the fair is one of those things where they collect money, they need to go to a facility that's secure to be able to count the funds and make the deposits and things of that nature.
Does this budget include um, uh, cameras and things as far as that would be able to have monitoring on and off-site? I think that would be important for our staff.
The project includes all security, all data.
Okay, got you.
I got one question. This is one of the biggest things that, that I have seen going to that fair ever since I was knee-high to Grasshopper. Bathrooms. I know we've added bathrooms over the years, but it, it's just not, they're not, they're not what we need. If we're gonna have something like this, you're gonna have seven hundred and seventy-five parking spots there, plus you're gonna have a number up there, what, thirty-two, forty-two up against the building. You're gonna have the other parking lot out there, so potentially you could have, I mean, look at the fair, look at, look at events we have, you got thousands and thousands of people there, the horse sale, the whole nine yards. The bathrooms are just not there. I mean, they're, they're just not, they're not properly heated, they're not properly cooled, there's nothing like that. So something I would like to see in the alternate, and I don't know if y'all agree or not, but tear down the two existing bathrooms and replace them with something that matches, something that's, that's with this building that actually is.
Year-round.
Year-round, climate-controlled.
Yep.
And we know not to put paper towels in them from Jennings Park, no paper towels.
No paper towels.
Because people will flush everything and it'll stop up everything. Isn't that right, David?
Yes, sir.
But.
We like air dryers.
Just, just as an alternate, just tear down and just build back the two existing they've got. You know, you know, you know where I'm going with that one, David.
They could handle, they could handle the number of people potentially that would be there.
Mm-hmm. One of the things that, and we could certainly do that, and if you go, and I know we don't have it in front of us, but if we went back and looked at the master plan design, there, in the master plan design, there were two facilities and one was, uh, had a bank of restrooms in those two different facilities. So uh, now that would be an increase to the budget and I don't know if we would maybe build the shell of that building I'm looking at Chelsea. I don't know exactly how we do that, but I knew that one of the buildings, um, there behind the arena, or I guess in front of the arena, I'm thinking, that was the one that had a lot of the restrooms in it.
Mm-hmm.
And that was kind of, that facility was programmed for a lot of restrooms there. So I don't know if that would be the area that we would build that restroom, but that building had other purposes as well, so it'd be, it would be a little bit more expensive.
Well, I'm gonna be the.
Do that.
The bad person in the room. I know we are saving the master plan and we're trying to do. I don't think nobody in this county and nobody on this board would support a hotel site to have a hotel at any given point. We're not in the hotel business. And I don't see us doing anything other than what we're getting ready to do here for a long, long time because we gotta build schools.
Schools.
And I think we're gonna address some other issues about growth and stuff. We're gonna talk about some stuff later on today, but if us doing schools and us doing everything we can do, that's what we're gonna be doing around this, this county for the next fifty years. And I think when this gets here, short of somebody winning the lottery or David donating fifty to sixty million dollars to us, I don't see us doing anything else here for a long time. I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I think y'all probably agree, but.
The bathrooms might be worn out by the time it's time to do the rest of the master plan, so look at replacing the bathrooms as simple as possible, but functional as possible.
And there's areas there that probably would not impact the master plan, but I, I think we need to.
Well, I agree with you and I think, because I know like at the Charlotte Speedway when we have car shows in there, you know, go ahead as an alternate in the bathrooms and look at a, you know, a couple shower stalls that are lockable to where you got overnight people at the fair and other things. That's the only time we really have anybody overnight, right? May not need that. I'm just saying.
I, with the, I, yeah.
Well, they probably can, some of them stay on site in campers.
Yeah.
But they don't have any place other to, to shower. I don't know what that would cost. It may be an over, uh, reach.
They can stay at the hotel whenever we get all the schools.
Well, the most important thing is functional bathroom and having sufficient amount of them to what he's saying.
Let us bring you back some options.
I mean, the two sites we've got, the two bathrooms, you know, everything is there, power and obviously water.
So they didn't add to it.
You know, so, you know, seems the most reasonable, at least in thought, cost-wise, is to raise and.
Yeah.
And reconstruct in place. Just do it, do it where it's.
Yeah, something, we could add some, some, some good bathrooms, some good bathrooms that, that people.
Quality, yeah.
Like Buc-Ee's.
Yeah, just like Buc-Ee's. That's right.
Maybe not quite as big or as many stalls, um.
Well, I think, and maybe you're required by law to do this, so correct me, but when you're looking at that design, I think you gotta also look at a couple family bathrooms where a mom or dad could go in there and change a kid. Like, you know, maybe y'all were required to do that, but I think function, I think when you're looking at what Bert's talking about, you have a, a lot for the masses, but then I think you also keep in mind handicap and/or family in some of that space as well, because you got a lot of families and kids there that may need to go in, change a kid, whatever, handicap accessible as well. I, I'd like for that to be functional. I think that's where he's at.
And another thing we gotta look at too, time crunch. We've only got a certain amount of time to spend this money, so.
Right.
There may be some people that's got some events planned that may get canceled.
That was gonna be one of my questions. So, um, because to do the bathroom, that's something that's gonna have to be designed and everything like that. So because we do have a time crunch for the, these dollars, is the board okay if we could go ahead and move forward with this project and then send back to them to, to look and design a separate facility for additional restrooms with the additional funding that we have?
I'm good with that.
That way we're, we can go ahead and get.
Rolling.
Get rolling on this to get the grant dollars spent within the necessary timeframe. Is that amenable to everybody?
And I think we need to also add in there too, that if anybody that leases space or does anything there of events, once we get this back and we need to get back really quickly, we don't need to work around that schedule. We need to work around what our schedule is with this money that we got to expend.
Yeah.
And, and that's the schedule it needs to go. So some things may get shifted around.
It's just like Jennings Park, i- if you gotta displace people for a season, I'm sorry, but let's get it done.
Mm-hmm.
And let's keep that in mind. So, so do we need them?
Oh, I mean, I guess I just wanted to say, uh, piggybacking off what Beth mentioned about the master plan, this building kind of more or less fills the functions of one of the buildings we had planned. It's just also a farmer's market, I would say. Um, but we could look at loc-, a couple locations for an additional restroom building considering the master plan and looking at it to be expandable in the future if we did want to grow into some of the proposed buildings for that site.
Because that maybe could be an option, but also look at the existing bathroom. I think what Brad and Bert were talking about is look at, you know, upfitting that to additional bathrooms and more modern, whatever. I guess look at both options.
Yeah.
Right?
Budget-friendly, budget-friendly.
What is the projected starting time?
Well, I was gonna just give you the schedule. Uh, our plan is to go ahead and try to get this thing out the bid in March, April. Site work at the parking lots will begin right then as soon as we can mobilize. Uh, site, we hope to have gravel down by the twenty-twenty-six fair, where at least we can use it for some type of parking. Uh, it won't be complete, but at least enough to park on. And then as soon as the fair is over with, right after Labor Day, uh, the farmer's market site work begins and our goal is to have it in by mid, uh, early to mid-July, which gives us six to eight weeks of, uh, punch list is done by then, but still we have items that maybe that we need to take care of, so we can have a grand opening, uh, for all of this for the fair on, in twenty-twenty-seven.
How about the horse sale? We're gonna interrupt?
Uh, horse sale, we'll work around the best we can. Uh, we won't be impacting the, the midway except for that one adjustment, but we will do all we can with it. But the fair itself is kind of the two, uh, twenty-sixth fair, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seventh fair. Now, your horse sales are on, at Eastern Thanksgiving and that's right in the middle of construction. So we'll do all we can. Uh, I'm not sure how to work around it, but we will give them all the space that we can and work around those things. Uh, the, uh, the design and construction team know that we need two weekends of that.
Right.
So if something that we can, uh, fence off, use it, let them come in and do what, what we can. They may have to be modified or moved around a little bit and then do the same thing at Thanksgiving for the, uh, late one in twenty-six.
But the good news is we won't be impacting the barns, the arena, that area that they use. So they should still be able, the only thing, maybe the parking, but it would, it would be gravel, um, that they could park on.
Best we can.
I wouldn't rash now.
Than what they have now. Yes, that's correct.
Rash now.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the full build-out with the high-rise, which included the air and all, and ask them to come back with us with some options on the outside power outlets in the parking area and around the building and also, I guess in the separate drawing, if I'm saying it right, what Bert asked for and, and the board asked for, for additional park, uh, bathroom options and upgrades to that as a separate, but go ahead and proceed with the full build-out with the high-rise that included AC and then get us some option for, uh, alternates, I guess I would say, for the outside plugs. Y'all good with that?
Yep.
Yeah, without having the trip hazard of the cords that you see all over the place.
Right, oh yeah, right, right.
So can I ask one, one point of clarification? And do you want us to go ahead and just include outlets, um, in the building, exterior building design of that? Go ahead and include that in the design?
Add them, in the design.
Or do you want that to come back to you to review?
I want that to be in the design.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no problem.
But not where it needs to come back, where you're looking to approve outlets. So just to go ahead and do the, the enclosed option with the pop-up, add electrical outlets and we can bid that as an alternate and then you can see what the cost is and include that if you choose.
Right.
Um, so we can go ahead and do that and then parking A, B, and C, the full parking.
Full thing, let's do the whole thing.
And then, so we'll go ahead and move forward with that and then work on a design for additional restrooms.
Yes.
And bring that back to the board for consideration.
Yes. Clarified my motion, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. That's better to be more specific.
Better to know now.
I, I just wanna make sure because if, if we need to bring it back for, um, approval of the, the electrical, it's gonna take some additional time.
No, it's there.
Okay, keep going.
Yep.
Yeah.
You got something to say?
I just, I can't resist it, but Scotty, do you want wireless electrical outlets? Check it. I'm just checking.
It's motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes.
Thank y'all for your work on it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Come back with what we were looking for. Thank you.
Very nice.
So the next item under administrative matters is a request from the Health Department for approval to write off uncollected balances in the amount of five thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. And Ms. Jessica Ridgeway is here to make the presentation to the board.
Thank you. Uh, so annually we come in front of our Board of Health and our Board of Commissioners to get approval for write-offs. Uh, these balances are from, um, accounts that have had no activity since June twenty-twenty-two and they have, of course, been sent their statements and their debt set-off letters to hopefully collect on those balances. Um, but we are requesting today five thousand one hundred and, one hundred dollars and twenty cents in private pay balances to write off. The majority of that is our maternal health clinic and that is because once we start seeing a pregnant woman, we cannot stop care even if they do not pay us. So that's where the majority of that comes from. And then we also have two hundred and ninety-six dollars in Medicaid balances for two claims that we cannot get payment from our prepaid health plans. And of course, our staff have done everything we can to collect that, but we just cannot get it. Um, so if there are no questions, I would like to request the approval to write off the total amount of five thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents.
Anybody got any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a three-year lease for the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Forestry Service Department. And Ms. Kaitlin Sparks is here to make this presentation to the board.
Hey, everybody. I'm here to present today for a, a renewal of, uh, an extending of a lease that's been going on for a very, very long time for our forestry service. Um, and they are asking for a five hundred and four, uh, net square foot office space in exchange for, um, yeah, it is five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars annually. And that's for three years.
Okay. Any questions?
Mm-mm.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Yeah. The next item is a request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number Ten to appropriate E-nine-one-one reconsideration funds. And Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the board.
Ecom staff submitted a reconsideration request to the nine-one-one board, um, which included costs for our recorder replacement as well as the annual maintenance on the recorder at Ecom. Both of those items were included in the general fund annual budget. Um, so we submitted a request for them to reconsider giving us an additional appropriation for those two items. Um, and it was approved by the nine-one-one board, so we are requesting a budget amendment to recognize those funds and appropriate those funds in the nine-one-one board, which frees up what was budgeted in the general fund for those. And we were, the total cost on that was two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, which was approved.
Caroline, do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Administration to approve the minutes from the meeting on October seventh, two thousand twenty-five Board of Commissioner meeting.
Consent.
Consent.
The final item is a request, a request from Tax Administration for approval of the September two thousand twenty-five releases and refunds. I will just make one note, um, it's a little bit more than it has been previously. There was, uh, one aircraft that was actually, um, registered here and then they found out that it was actually in, uh, New York as well. So that is the primary, primary residence where they pay taxes, so that's part of this refund.
And I bet ours is cheaper here than it was up there.
Oh, I'm sure it probably is, yes.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
That's all the items for Administrative Matters.
And since you're on a roll, brings us down to the announcement of vacancies of Boards and Commissions, which we're getting a little bit better on our standing.
We are doing, we're doing better. I'm excited, because we are getting some applications, so we're really excited about that. So if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and announce them again. We have six appointments on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, four appointments on the Board of Health, three appointments for Central Indiana Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, one appointment, Moore'sville Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ member, six appointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one appointment on the Recreation Advisory Board, and one alternate appointment on the Troutman Planning Board, which is also an ETJ member.
And then tonight, we've got a couple appointments on Boards and Commissions. If you want to go over those, you're going to wait till the six or...
It's up to the Board. If you want me to go ahead and cover them, and then you can vote on them at the six o'clock.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and cover them, that'd be good.
Okay. So these are the, we have four different Boards and Commissions that we have individuals that have volunteered to serve. The Animal Grievance Committee, we have one appointment, and Lori Root, she has been serving and is wishing to serve again, so that one will be a reappointment on the Animal Grievance Committee. We have an appointment on the Jury Commission. We had an individual that no longer wishes to serve, and so we have Mary Wayne that has volunteered to serve for the first time, and that one is one that they're waiting for that appointment so they can get started. So the Local Child Fatality Team, we have one appointment, and it is a law enforcement appointment. And so we have Moore'sville Police Sergeant Jeremy Dingler that has volunteered to serve for the first time on that board in the law enforcement seat. And then we have three appointments on the Recreation Advisory Board. All three are currently serving and wish to serve again, and that's Joseph Cook, Jane Laney, and Barb Thorson.
Thank you. Does anyone have any unfinished business at the four o'clock hour?
I do want to say, you've already touched on Commissioner Conley and Manager Moll. We are getting better at our advisory boards and our placements, and I think that's a direct reflection of some of the things of getting us to be engaged with more folks from our citizens. But more so is, I think, how our clerk is processing and handling and getting those directly to us, and makes it a much better, easier, streamlined policy and procedure. And John, I appreciate that.
Public comment period is tonight at the six o'clock hour. I'd like to ask, do we have any Commissioner updates at the four o'clock, or do everybody want to wait till the six?
Let me ask you this, and I'll get input from the rest of the Board. A lot of times, I feel like our audience is different from the four o'clock versus the six. Sometimes people are able to watch the four and not the six, or vice versa, and some are able to watch both. But there's some thoughts that are on my mind that I feel would be worth sharing at the four o'clock and the six o'clock. So if the Board is okay with it, to go ahead and... All right. So, and with that being said, you will notice that I'm referencing my own handwritten notes, because when I share my thoughts on something that's important, I want to make sure that I stick with what I want to say. And with that being said, first and foremost, we are definitely blessed to live where we live. We live an amazing country that has been protected by our armed forces for generations, and it gives us a freedom of speech. But when we are elected officials, we have a responsibility above and beyond just being able to speak. We need to make sure that we are sharing factual information. And if you know me, you know I don't like to waste time, nor do I like to waste words. But when something comes into my mind, a thought that comes to my mind, weighs heavy on my heart, lands in my gut, I've got to share those words. And with that being said, I think it's important, when citizens attend meetings, whether it be virtually or in person, they need, no, they deserve factual information. They deserve that information, and they need to know what is legal and allowable, and the steps that take place on decisions that will impact their lives. Last night during the Statesville City Council meeting, a council member shared information that was incorrect, stated repeatedly that a request that was before them at City Council for rezoning of a combination of 147 acres, potentially for over 300 homes, it was stated by that council member that it first came to the Board of Idle County Commissioners. That is incorrect. Continued to state, and I quote, "felt citizens don't do them the same way," unquote. Let me stop at this point and just correct. That request did not come to Idle County Board of Commissioners. We, as Commissioners, also encourage our citizens to come and speak their concerns, whether it be on a rezoning that we're facing or concern in general. We encourage input from our citizens to come before us. Let me focus back again on the comments that were made in addition last night at the Statesville City Council meeting by the member of the Board of City Council. The citizens remind you that she stated that it came to us. It did not come to the Board of Commissioners. There were citizens that were witnessing that statement. The citizens are the ones that live with the decisions daily that are voted on by Boards, by us and by other Boards. They are impacted directly by the decisions that are faced and how they are voted on. The citizens of Idle County that voted for us as Idle County Board of Commissioners, we like their input, and we want to hear from them. Another concern of mine was during the meeting last night at Statesville City Council. There was no clear clarification of the comments that were stated. That meeting is recorded, just like our meetings are recorded, without a correction that was clear. Not only did the citizens and community members that were attending last night's meeting, there are also ones that were viewing it. They were given misinformation, and from this point forward, anyone that views that meeting from recorded, whether it be through YouTube or any other platform, it shows misinformation. When elected officials have the privilege to represent on a Board, it is critically important to inform our citizens of policy and procedure so they have a clear understanding who makes the decisions and how those decisions are made. This is the second time within a month that a Statesville City Council member has stated completely inaccurate information referencing Idle County Commissioners' approval on a rezoning request. I am concerned, and I'm disappointed, that the incidents of such as these erode the trust of our citizens. This Board, our Idle County Board of Commissioners, and our staff and our team members on Idle County Board of Commissioners are dedicated to truthful information. We are dedicated to transparency, to the citizens, to each other. We are dedicated to the honor of our elected seats. And if you are so compelled, I'd like to share my thoughts again at six o'clock. This is, it's important to me, and one of the reasons I see when I speak in groups and I speak in schools, one of the questions I often ask, I will ask, and I just recently asked this in a senior class in a high school, I said, "How many of you think being a politician is a bad thing?" Majority of the kids shake their heads. Another question that I'll ask those students is, "How many of you feel like politicians lie?" Their hands go up.
That's right.
And it concerns me, because we on this Board try so hard. We take our decisions to heart. We lose sleep. We fret over them. We sweat over them. We become flustered, because we want to do what is right for our citizens. We none of us take this seat lightly. We appreciate the skill set of our employees. We appreciate the skill set of each other. And with that being said, I'll wrap up my comments for the four o'clock hour, but just know that it's important for people on all Boards to recognize how powerful their words are. Thank you.
And those people have to do their homework, and they have to be factual, what they say.
Yes.
And that's what...
And if you don't know for sure, or if it sounds wrong, ask and get verified. Yes, thank you.
I'd like to add one thing to that, or two things to that. One is, as I listened to that meeting last night, and some of the same people that you're talking about talked about, you know, them building schools, them, you know, working as a team with us building schools. I want a check. Write us a check. You know, if you're throwing money out from City Statesville, you know, write us a check, but they're the ones building the houses, not us. We turn down as much as we can turn down, of course. We can't control it so much, but they're the ones who want the houses. And the other thing is, when a Board like that sits there and says, "Be careful who you're voting for," and I'm sitting there listening to somebody that don't have a clue what they're talking about, somebody voted for that person.
Yeah.
So that's... People are not paying attention to who they're voting for, but be careful. When us five right here, that's what they were talking about. Be careful who you're voting for.
People's buddies, I think they refer to it, too.
That's right. I always say, "Don't vote for your mama." I've been saying that for years. Don't, don't, if my mom was alive and she ran for, I wouldn't vote for her, because I know she can't do it. Vote for people that can do the job. So anyway.
Then I will add at six o'clock, but I'm going to do a page out of Melissa's book today, and I want to talk about a subject both now and at the six o'clock hour. We have a person here in the county who likes to claim themselves to be a political...
Wiz.
...wiz, who I noticed recently through some of the different places, Facebook, and put up that in 2015, North Carolina passed the Transparency Legislation Act, that, and Manager Moll, please correct me if I miss anything in here or miss something, but in 2015, the Transparency Legislation Act was passed, and it mandated and said that all cities, counties, school boards, anyone that basically got funds from the taxes had to monthly put their report online so the public could see it. The website is saying this has been law, and that is the one factual part. It's been law since 2015. What they're not telling is, the law says, that the state of North Carolina must create the mechanism or vehicle in the form of a computer program for us to upload, and my understanding is, it had to be done by the state so all county, states, and municipalities are reporting the exact same information. It's not something Idle County can create itself. So it was tasked to the North Carolina Department of Information Technology to create this mechanism or computer program. That has yet to be created. This person keeps saying that they need transparency, and we need to be changed, because we're not following the law. We've contacted the state. We've contacted the Institute of Government. We've asked, we are doing as much or more than required. We cannot meet this requirement, because the state has not completed its function. The primary person that sponsored this bill is no longer in office and didn't even realize, apparently, that this mechanism had not been created. So we have someone out telling that we're not being transparent in placing our receipts, and that check number 1274 written to John Doe for how much ever dollars, that we're not doing our jobs. We're doing our jobs. We're doing everything that we have to do, that we can do. We can't meet the requirement. There's no one in the entire state that is meeting that. And I challenge you, if you disagree, to come before this Board. I think this Board, as Melissa very eloquently stated, we take our job, this entire Board, we take this job very seriously. I don't think there's a single one of us that it benefits us. It would be much easier for us to all be at home with our family, watching that new television show. It's about a sheriff and his son, Andy Griffith Show. I could be home. I joke, I don't lose money doing this. I don't make any money doing this. I can tell you, I lose sleep doing this. And when you have people that want to call themselves supposedly political leaders in this county spewing, again, misinformation to bring discredit upon any Board, whether it's ours, because this is, every Board in this county ought to be mad. Moore'sville, Troutman, Statesville, Harmony, the school board, Mitchell College, we can't meet it. So you're calling all of us. So I'm tired of hearing it from people who don't go out and do their homework and then want to make us out the bad guys.
Okay, I agree.
Anything?
I'm good.
Jane, have anything for now?
I'm going to let y'all eat.
Anybody got any new business? Can you manage to report anything to do with the four?
Wait till the six.
Okay. We do not have a closed session tonight, therefore I'll ask if we have a motion to go into recess until our six o'clock meeting this evening.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or recess till 6:00 P.M.?